We are waiting and trustee Stefan, so let's be a little patient. Okay. Trustee Stefan, we'll give you a couple of minutes to get settled in. Trustee Stefan, are you ready? Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call it to order today's meeting, the regular meeting of the Desert Community College Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:30 a.m. You may join today's meeting in person at a limited capacity via Zoom webinar or watch the live stream from the College of the Desert YouTube channel. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. Good morning, Dr. Garcia. Roll call, please.
Good morning. Student trustee Olson. Present. Trustee Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Yant. He was going to join us virtually.
Trustee Yant, are you present?
We do not have him here just yet, Madam Chair.
Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Okay, we will keep checking to make trustee, make sure trustee Yant is able to join us. We'll move on to the next item, the Pledge of Allegiance. And trustee Gonzalez, would you kindly lead us in the pledge?
I will, Madam Chair. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Moving on to agenda item number two, 2.01 pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by a two-thirds vote of the board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for November 11th, 2021, Dr. Garcia?
No, Madam Chair.
Seeing none, the agenda stands confirmed as presented. Moving on to item number three, the minutes, the approval of the regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of October 21st, 2021? Hearing no corrections, they stand approved. Armando, has trustee Yant joined us yet?
Not quite yet, Madam Chair.
Can someone reach out to him and make sure that he is, he does have the information he needs to?
Madam Chair, trustee Yant will be joining about five minutes or less.
All right, thank you so much. Good old Julia. Okay, moving on to item number four, public comments. In accordance with Senate Bill 361 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health on gatherings, remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and read into the record during public comment, or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link. There is a time limit of three minutes per person. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comments section. Armando, do we have any public comments?
We do have one public comment submitted, and the comment is from Mary Lou Marujo, COD retiree, and reads as follows. Here we are, not even three months into the head-scratching presidency of Dr. Martha Garcia. In less than three months, she has taken a wrecking ball to the trust that hundreds of college employees have worked to rebuild with the Coachella Valley community over the past decade. Ignoring time-honored principles of shared governance and collegial consultation, not only has she unilaterally pulled the plug on the Roadrunner Motors project in Cathedral City, she has triggered red alerts in Palm Springs that COD's project there is on life support. Why would the community ever trust COD to keep its promises in the future when she keeps breaking them today? On today's agenda is a contract to hire one of Dr. Garcia's cronies from Imperial Valley College as interim executive vice president at a cost of nearly half a million dollars over 18 months. Dr. Garcia has stated that she is overwhelmed and unable to handle her job duties, so she is bringing in her friend to help her do her job, a job she was hired to do in August at $355,000 per year. Maybe if Dr. Garcia actually spent more of her time in the district doing her job instead of running around the state doing things unrelated to running COD, she wouldn't need to bring in her buddy to help her out. How can Dr. Garcia keep a straight face when she acts the Cathedral City project while saying, and I quote, "I am committed to ensuring that we remain responsible with public dollars," while at the same time she proposes to waste nearly $500,000 on an executive vice president because she's not capable of doing her own job? Additionally, do the trustees realize that Dr. Tafoya is a dentist and holds no master's degree? A quick check of Imperial Valley College's catalog confirms this. California Education Code requires an educational administrator to have an earned master's degree from an accredited institution. Dr. Tafoya does not mean minimum qualifications for the position of executive vice president and should not be hired. Also on today's agenda is the district's 50% law exemption request. The hiring of an executive vice president will push the district hundreds of thousands of dollars further out of compliance with the 50% law. How do you think the chancellor's office will react a year from now when COD presents another exemption request even further out of compliance? It would be the height of fiscal irresponsibility and negligence to approve the executive vice president's contract. I urge the trustees to vote no and to inform Dr. Garcia that they expect her to fulfill her own contract and do her job. It's time for the three trustees who forced Dr. Garcia on College of the Desert to get real and to admit to public, to the public and themselves that Martha, that the Martha Garcia experiment has failed.
Oh, is that it?
Checking for attendees. That seems to be the only public comment, yes.
Okay.
Oh, there is one more in the chat who has raised their hand.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Burkett. You have permission to speak here.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Board of Trustees members and Madam President. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Palm Springs Architectural Alliance, for which I'm a co-founder. I also happen to be a member of the COD Foundation. The Architectural Alliance is a consortium of nine different organizations throughout the Coachella Valley that have a focus on architecture and preservation. While each of these organizations are independent, we do come together for specific projects to enhance the community throughout the Coachella Valley. So although we have several sub-projects, our main focus has and is to facilitate a partnership between the College of the Desert and Cal Poly Pomona to create a five-year architecture program slated for the new Palm Springs campus. We began this endeavor two and a half years ago at a meeting which comprised of representatives from the COD, Cal Poly, local architects, and organizations. And collectively, we, with these organizations, there are thousands, many thousands of members that, that are under this banner. So the PSAA has played a part in the selection of the architects also for the new campus with a seat at the table during the interview process. We have brought in experts to educate the architects about the significance of architecture in greater Palm Springs. That means the entire Coachella Valley and the international reputation and recognition that we have received. So the positioning of a five-year program on the campus at the new Palm Springs, supposedly campus, is an ideal situation. Both facilities have a great deal of time into meeting the requirements of the state, and those that have been done were down to the MOU. However, at the recent planning meeting to initiate discussions of the MOU has been canceled, waiting on the feasibility study to be completed. This has greatly shaken both our competence as well as that of Cal Poly Pomona. I am raising a flag that partnership is now in danger. I urge you to reach out to Cal Poly and exercise some PR. Or should I be asking the question, are you willing to risk the opportunity, or do you care? The community at large is losing trust is what the PS campus will really look like. Maybe a four or 5,000-square building as a token, we are concerned, disappointed, and dismayed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Armando, are there any more public comments?
Madam Chair, yes, there's one more comment in chat. And you are granted speaking.
Hi, I think you mean me. Hi, this is Kristy Holstidge. I serve as the mayor for the city of Palm Springs. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President, trustees. I am calling in today because my residents are extremely concerned about how COD is operating and have questions about how decisions are being made. We are extremely concerned about what happened with the quick decision to cancel the COD campus long planned in Cathedral City with nearly five years of planning with that governmental agency, the city, and hundreds of residents. We are equally concerned about the Palm Springs campus. We know that COD spent $22 million of taxpayer funds to purchase the property, our vacant mall here in Palm Springs. It actually wasn't vacant, it's in my district, and we had an existing vocational school at that site with students attending that. Now the site sits vacant with no information from COD, the president, the trustees, about the future of the Palm Springs campus. It sits blighted with trees falling down, and it's unclear what will happen at that site. I've served on city council since 2017. Since that time, I've served on the city council subcommittee with COD. We've had numerous meetings with COD trustees and staff, and we've been promised that there will be shovels in the ground in 2023. I've held district town halls and staff has come and promised that. Now we read in the newspaper and hear from our residents, like the Palm Springs Architectural Alliance, that COD is not moving forward on an MOU with a five-year university like Cal Poly, which would be such an amazing opportunity for our residents. We know that residents, students in Desert Hot Springs, Cathedral City, and Palm Springs are the furthest away from a full campus of COD. They lack educational opportunity. And I've had friends who've had to drop out of COD because they can't take a 45-minute bus ride to the Palm Desert campus. So I urge you to meet with our city council, to have conversations with our residents, and please provide us updates about when and how decisions about the Cathedral City campus and Palm Springs campus are happening. Thank you so much for your work. I know it's very difficult in these times and COVID times to govern, especially an agency that oversees nearly a billion dollars in bond financing from our public. So thank you for your work, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Madam Chair, no other speakers at this time.
Thank you, Armando. Trustee Yant, I understand you've joined us. Are you there, sir?
Yes.
Good morning. Okay, we will move on to item number five, which is reports, and we will start off with ASCOT. Speaker Hassan Rakipi, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. Garcia, executive cabinet, and guests. I am happy to be here today and offer this report on behalf of ASCOT. The Halloween bash event was a success. We are happy to report that our first in-person event was a success. Although there was room for more students, those that showed up participated in the activities and reported their gratitude for being on campus and being with other students on campus. It seems like everyone had fun and every activity was utilized, like pumpkin carving and painting, ping pong, and the costume contest. I would also like to thank Dr. Garcia for taking the time out of her night to attend the event and to thank everyone that helped make this event possible. We are also planning to have a movie night before the semester ends, and preparations are going smoothly so far. Not much has occurred since the last meeting, other than the event. Everything is going well. I would like to take this time to thank Dr. Zakovic and Terry Wilson for meeting with my advisor, the ASCOT student trustee, and me. We all took the time to further understand and refine the administrative procedure 3950. I look forward to seeing how it turns out and take another step towards getting students back on campus and keeping people safe. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today. I look forward to seeing what the future holds as we continue to work on behalf of the students and community. If you have any questions, I will gladly take them at this time. Also, feel free to reach out to me by email, ascot@collegeofthedesert.edu.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our COD Foundation, Catherine, are you there?
I am here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. So, good morning, President Wilson, trustees, student trustee Olson, and superintendent president, Dr. Garcia. As the event season begins in the valley, the foundation's work is also becoming much busier. We have several events that we hope that you will calendar. This evening is our first in-person president circle event in probably a year and a half, and it's Victories for Veterans, and it will be held from 4:30 to 6:30 at the home of Carol Beldine. The Academic Angels Tea, if you are a member of the Academic Angels, will be held on November 18th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the home of Barbara Fromm. And then finally, the Legacy Leaders Thank You Gathering will be held on November 21st from 3:30 to 5:00 p.m., and that will be at Christo's. And then, as you all know, and I'm just going to keep this as a constant reminder, that the stepping out for COD event will be March 31st at the McAllen. I mentioned in October's report that the foundation was getting ready for its annual planning session at the Desert Willow, and that was on October 27th. Fundraising consultant Jeff Bagel kicked off the day with the USA Today headline stating, "College of the Desert Foundation Ranked First in the Country for Institutionally Related Community College Foundations." Our work in the morning session helped us focus on one day achieving that lofty goal, and we focused on the board's understanding of the charge of an institutionally related foundation, the board's belief and passion for the foundation's mission, vision, and values, the board embracing its committee roles and responsibilities, the board dutifully performing its fiduciary and fundraising responsibilities, the board helping to take the foundation's donor stewardship to the next level, and then finally, the board's philanthropic support of the foundation. The board really enjoyed the day, but in particular, the presentation from Dr. Garcia. This was the first opportunity they had to spend some time with her, and we know she's extremely busy, and so we appreciate the time that she was able to spend with us. But the end of the day, I think, was really where, you know, we had a kind of a capstone for the end of the day. We invited 12, well, we invited all of our former board members to a reception following the annual planning session, and 12 showed up, and so it was a great way to reconnect with those who have made a tremendous impact on the foundation to support College of the Desert. Since the beginning of the fall, there have been an uptick in requests for the Student Emergency Fund. We believe that this is attributed to additional presence on campus by our students. To date, the foundation has paid out approximately $375,000 to 464 individual students. The remaining fund balance, at the time that I had written this report, was $76,570. We had about 11 more requests that have come in since this time, and so now we're at about $67,000 for our Student Emergency Fund. So finally, we have very interesting data to share with you. We looked at a year-over-year comparison of individual donors that are contributing to the College of the Desert Foundation. In 2019-20 academic year, there were 432 individual donors with a total of 1,619 gifts. In 2021, there were 677 donors and 1,931 gifts, which is an increase of 245 additional donors and 312 donations.
Wonderful.
So I think these results are attributed to the great work of the foundation, board of directors, staff, and everyone here at College of the Desert who are committed to helping COD students create their tomorrow. That concludes my report, and if you have any questions, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Catherine. Great news to, many, many thanks to the foundation. Okay, moving on to, next is the CSCE, and I understand Jim Lilly, are you there? You're doing? There you are.
Classified staff remain focused and dedicated to providing our students high Greetings, Board of Trustees. Classified staff remain focused and dedicated to providing our students high-quality service. CSCE and the district continue to have healthy discussions regarding the vaccine mandate, testing procedures, and safety needs. We will continue to work towards language that grants classified staff the option to work from home as needed. We want to remind the board that the district does not have a BP or AP related to telecommuting. Such a policy would provide structural flexibility for the district employees that can work from home. From recent meetings and conversations, a telecommuting policy would be beneficial for classified professionals and management. CSCE would like to recognize the hard work and dedication that all employee groups provide throughout the district. We all work diligently to represent our individual groups and collaborate amongst each other to provide needed services, resources, and education to our students and community. So kudos to students, classified professionals, adjuncts, full-time faculty, leadership, and the trustees for their continued dedication to our wonderful community. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Adjunct Association. Michael Gladich, Michael, are you there?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, President Garcia, members of the board, and college community. The adjuncts wish to commend the district bargaining team led by Dean Papas, including Terry Wilson, Cody McCabe, Dean Butler, and Dean Holman for their efforts to help clear up ambiguities in the CBA regarding the procedures and forms used for assigning adjuncts their teaching loads. We appreciate the openness, professionalism, and collegiality of these negotiations. Coda remains somewhat optimistic that we will be able to complete an MOU with the district for changes in working conditions brought about by the vaccine mandate. In addition, we continue to wait for the beginning of negotiations for a separate MOU regarding working conditions during the 2022 winter intercession and changes to working conditions caused by the campus reopening in spring 2022. Why do I always lose my voice? It is imperative to open negotiations to discuss the difficult circumstances adjuncts will face in winter and spring. Coda is hopeful that the much-needed revisions to AP 7120, currently in process in the academic senate and the CPC, will bring this administrative procedure into alignment with ED code and Title V. We need to remove the conflation of hiring and assignment of adjunct faculty without of full-time temporary faculty, a practice which has plagued COD for the last several years. This conflation of hiring procedures is an underlying cause for the lack of parity, equity, and inclusion expressed by so many adjuncts in the October board report. Coda shares the urgent concerns of CODFA regarding winter and spring scheduling, class sizes, and safety protocols. The majority of faculty serving the community face-to-face on a daily basis are adjuncts. Coda is committed to the success of our students as we reopen, but we urge the board to be mindful of the ever-changing landscape of the pandemic, particularly the sudden emergence of the even more transmissible AY.4.2 Delta Plus variant. The LA Times reports that this variant wreaking havoc in other countries was detected last month in San Diego. With this in mind, Coda urges vigilance and caution in removing any safety protocols and urges the board to consider the long-range consequences if we allow the Delta Plus variant to take hold in our community. Finally, today is Veterans Day, and the president of Coda has asked me to add a few words to say that Coda joins all Americans and everyone in the world, really, to honor the men and women who serve in our armed forces and who defend our country with generosity and courage. So, Madam Chair, that concludes the report from Coda's president, Dr. Catherine Levitt. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll now move on to the faculty We'll now move on to the Faculty Association. Oceana Collins.
Hi. Good, good morning, trustees and Desert of College of the Desert community. We are well into the fall semester and looking ahead to the spring semester. There has been a lot of talk lately about opening the campus. What does that mean? The fact is, the campus has been open. The students are being served, both in person and remotely. Our members continue to work hard to serve students every day. Students continue to complete courses successfully and work toward their educational goals. Counselors continue to meet with students, and in fact, many are reporting that students seem to prefer the online appointments, which is evidenced by an overall decrease in the amount of no-shows for counseling appointments. As a member of the COVID Task Force, I know that we have approved a multitude of on-campus activities for both faculty and students. If by opening the campus people mean opening up the entrances with no checkpoints, well, there is a reason why that hasn't happened, and that reason is safety. The fact is, is that we are still dealing with an airborne disease that people continue to die from. Most of our members support the vaccination mandate, but until the mandate is in place, checkpoints and limited entrance points still remain important safety measures. In spring, once the mandate is in place, it must be enforced, and the district must monitor weekly testing for all unvaccinated people with exemptions. Codefa strongly recommends that the district utilize an app such as the Clear App to keep track of the testing status of all unvaccinated people who are returning to campus. Cofa would like to thank H R., the Codebit, Codebit Reporting Team, and I T. Who worked hard to create the Vaccination Affidavit Form, now available on the portal. Moving forward, we are hopeful that with a clear and well-communicated plan in place, we can safely open the campus as described by people who would like to see unmonitored open entrances. Codefa is currently in negotiations with the district for our spring M O U. I want to thank the district team, Mark Zakovic, Terry Wilson, Amanda Phillips, and Carlos Maldonado for rapidly responding to our urgent request to bargain. The reason why we requested to bargain with urgency is that the district made the decision behind the scenes to expand course enrollment caps to what is listed on the course outline of record. For many classes, this would effectively eliminate social distancing in the classroom. Neither Codefa nor Coda was consulted before making this decision, and clearly, it is a safety issue. Codefa has sent a survey to our members regarding this decision. To date, we have had a hundred and thirty-three responses out of a hundred and sixty-five. When members were asked, the district has made the decision to put course enrollments for spring at the course capacity listed on the course outline of record. If you are scheduled to teach in person in the spring, do you feel comfortable with this decision? Fifty-eight percent said no, twenty-six percent said yes, and ten percent it was not applicable to. When members were asked, if you were working in person in the spring, do you think the district should maintain their social distancing protocols right now six feet? Sixty-three percent said yes, nineteen percent said no, four percent not applicable. The results of this survey clearly indicate that the majority of our members do not feel comfortable with the course caps being offered at what is listed on the C O R. And that the majority of our full-time faculty would like to see the district maintain six or at least some feet of social distancing. Another Codefa survey asked members, what is the most pressing concern for you regarding working conditions? There was concern on multiple categories, but the most of our members are concerned about interaction with unvaccinated people while at work, and many were also concerned about clear procedures and protocols when monitoring the mandate. Here is a sample of what some of the many comments members left. Vaccination mandate, COVID testing, and respected COVID safety protocols are crucial points for a safe return to campus in spring twenty-two. COVID testing for unvaccinated students or employees should be a must once a week as a minimum. Unquote. Having a clear plan regarding what to do if student or an employee gets COVID in addition to COVID vaccine mandate would be a priority for all attending campus. If not, continue testing the ones who are not vaccinated weekly and wearing a mask. If the trustees would like a complete list of all the comments made by faculty in the survey, I am happy to provide that information. Our M O U. Is also asking that the district take the safety of non-instructional faculty into special consideration. Non-instructional faculty are on the front lines of our institution. They will be interacting with prospective students who are not subject to the vaccination mandate, and they also work in public air spaces where they will be coming into contact with the general public on a regular basis. Finally, all of our members are hard at work, serving our community on a daily basis. Whether it is online or in person, our members continue to be dedicated to the success of our students. Our campus is open. I urge the district to demonstrate their gratitude to our faculty hard work during this challenging time by agreeing to the safety members we had proposed in our M O U. And lastly, I know I'm out of time, but I would also like to take a moment to honor the commitment, courage, and sacrifices of our American veterans. Thank you for your service. Just in the nick of time. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to the next area is the Academic Senate. Dr. Dozier, are you there? Oh, there you are. Good morning. So nice to see you. Yes, so nice to see you. You hit the button, and then when you see it red, then it's on. You're on.
Oh, look at that technology. Good to see everybody in person. Hello and happy fall. If I had not been required to submit this report last Friday, I might be talking about the fact that we are simultaneously spending an incredible amount of money to hire a new administrator while asking for an exemption to the fifty percent law or how our own hiring processes for temporary educational administrators have not been followed and that no pool defined in this case as more than one individual was established. But I will go ahead and just read my already submitted report. As always, the faculty are super busy this time of the year as we have passed midterms and finals week is just around the corner. Updates, the Senate is working with I T. And the Office of Instruction to pilot approximately twelve to fourteen courses that will be offered as high flex this spring. High flex will allow students to attend face-to-face, log in via Zoom during live sessions, or to complete a course fully online. We are very hopeful that this flexibility will meet the needs of students who, while they may want to return to campus, find themselves unable to commit to a full face-to-face course schedule. We are also working with Student Services to hire student workers who will help with the technology so that faculty can focus on teaching and not worry about technology. Faculty development is beginning to plan for flex, some of which we hope to offer again face-to-face in January. But we will continue to offer robust virtual sessions as we have found that this is also allowed for increased adjunct participation and made it easy for all faculty and staff to attend more sessions because of no need to change rooms on campus. Educational policies and practices is working on a review of A P seventy-one twenty, the college's hiring procedures, as we continue to improve how we advertise, recruit, and hire faculty and staff and work towards a more diverse and inclusive process. Ed tech, curriculum, and O A C. Continue their work diligently as always. The Senate would also like to congratulate the first group of graduates from the Kansas State University Educational Leadership doctoral program. And I was also asked by some of them to thank the board for supporting this program. Have a good Veterans Day. Thank you to those who serve.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for coming. We'll now move on to the board reports, and we'll start off with Student Trustee Olson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. Garcia, Executive Cabinet, and members of the public. I attended the Ask God Halloween Bash. It was a great experience, and I'm grateful for the opportunity it provided to speak with students. I want to thank Dr. Garcia for stopping by the event as well. I also would like to thank the Ask God student leaders that helped organize this event. In-person events are great for our students, and they help to bring the student life aspect back to campus. I'm grateful for the support of the Office of Student Life and Anna and Danny's assistance in making this event a success. A big thank you to Carlos as well for his guidance and support. I'm excited for Ask God's drive-in event, drive-in movie event that is quickly approaching. With these events in mind, as well as having the opportunity to spend more time on campus, I want to express that I am looking forward to increasing in-person services in the spring semester. Having the in-person options allows for more connection. I know that for me personally, having that time on campus, being able to meet new students and interact with the staff has immensely benefited me, both in terms of how much I am learning in my classes and my mental health. I want to thank all of our veterans and wish you all a happy Veterans Day. And with the holidays coming soon, I want to wish everyone a happy early Thanksgiving, and I hope you all have a safe and fun break. That is all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning, everyone. Of course, today is Veterans Day, so I just want to thank all of our veterans for their service and a special shout-out to our veterans and our C O D. Community. I was unable to attend the many different activities that the students and faculty did together here at C O D., but I did see a lot of the pictures. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who was involved in planning and executing the events. It looked like a lot of fun. I was a little jealous that I wasn't able to attend, but thank you so much to everyone who who was involved and who made it successful. Also want to give a shout-out to our athletic department and our athletes who are doing such a tremendous job. I'm hoping as well that I will be able to attend a few games hopefully soon. It is such a, for me personally, it's so amazing to see, you know, events and people having such a good time and seeing our students be able to interact with each other. I was able on Saturday to attend a few community events, like Desert Hot Springs had a Dia de los Muertos. City of India had a Dia de los Muertos event as well, and so did the City of Coachella. And it was really, really amazing for me to just see folks dancing, laughing, having such a good time, and it is just such a such a relief and such a beautiful thing for me to see that, you know, folks again are able to interact, because I know for a lot of people that during the pandemic, many of us were able to continue working, but so many people weren't. And I know they have been contained, and to a certain degree, we've all been, you know, kind of shut down. I think the highlight was going to the grocery store because that's kind of the only place you could go. And I just think it's just so gratifying to see everyone having such a good time. And, you know, I just want to thank everyone who continues to be involved in ensuring the safety of students and staff alike. You know, just know that, you know, the board supports you, and I look forward to attending some of these events, and I just want to, you know, again, encourage everyone. Let's just keep wearing our masks, be safe, so that we can have more events and be together more often. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Yant.
Thank you. This morning's Chronicle of Higher Education Online had an extensive, long article titled, How Do We Rebuild? And it's an in-depth study of enrollment at community colleges across the United States. It starts with something, of course, that we know. Community College Research Center identified three reasons for the drop, and it's not surprising. COVID, job losses, and internet access. But after the obvious, they began to look in depth in different colleges and their attempt to rebuild enrollment. And some interesting statistics and facts have been coming out from these studies. First is the importance of what is identified as high-touch. And that is reaching out to students in a very old media telephone. And the high-touch, reaching out to students seems to be very, very important in rebuilding enrollment. A second strategy that has been very successful is to rethink scheduling. You know, thirty, thirty-five years ago, National University built its reputation on how it scheduled classes. And that is, it began its scheduling by deciding, by determining when students wanted classes. So really rethinking the scheduling made, has made a big differences on some campuses. Third, it directs a lot of attention to the issue of online and internet access. And there's an interesting conclusion that came out. And and I think it's something that does have relevance for us. First, obviously, when we started, many students were not familiar with online learning, and therefore, were not comfortable with it, and many did not have appropriate access. And some administrations and some colleges have assumed that that is the case now, two years later. In fact, the research has shown that the majority of students now prefer online, do have better access, and are much more comfortable and prefer that. And many campuses are going more to mixed mode. In other words, recognizing that students are now comfortable with it and prefer it and want to do it. And it goes back to, I think, what we've been talking about for two years is we're not going back to where we were before. We need to rethink the reality of what students want and when they want it. And that means there will be more mixed mode. I can't help but say it's not that new. Thirty years ago, when I was faculty at Cal State, I taught online classes which originated with a live group in San Bernardino that had students live in the campus at College of the Desert and actually enrolled two people from New Zealand. And we did it all online, and that mix works, and it can be done. And it goes to what people prefer. And I want to echo what Oceana said, and that some students now prefer that. So we now to need to look at how we can meet what students want and how they can access it. We don't, we shouldn't make judgments based on what we think students want. We need to make it on what students actually do want. And finally, I just want to say, my telephone is overheating from calls I'm getting from residents in Palm Springs and Cathedral City. And I want to echo what Mayor Holstead said. It's not one issue. It is just general uncertainty, uncomfort with what we are doing and who we are and what we are saying. So I'm just reporting that to other board members. That's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yant. Trustee Stefan.
Good morning. First off, I'd like to say a big thank you to all of our veterans, active-duty and active-duty service members and all of their families. And the first thing I did this morning was I woke up and I called my daughter and thanked her and thanked her husband for what what he has done as a veteran and for what she is still continuing to do. So thank you to all of you. We owe you a debt of gratitude for what we do have in this country. On October twenty-first, after our meeting, I attended the memorial services for one of our past trustees, John Marman. It was a wonderful celebration of life, people sharing, former students, former businesspeople, former people that have worked with him, his family, seeing his family again, and just being able to be there together and to reminisce about the wonderful contributions that our former trustee John Marman had given to our community and to the college here and to our valley. October twenty-seventh, I took part in a moment of silence to remember the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen Pittsburgh Jewish community that had suffered the most brutal, brutal anti-Semitic semantic attack in U.S. History when a gunman opened fire in the Tree of Life Building. It was just a moment to pause and to remember a group that had been brutally attacked and remember that things that we don't like still go on in this country. November sixth and seventh last weekend, I made it out to the Pride Celebration on the seventh. And I tried to find our C O D. Booth that we're supposed to have out there. I never did find it. But as my fellow trustee Gonzalez has said, it was a time of celebration, and it was great to see people finally being able to come together into the community and to celebrate together. Today, I will wish Donnie Prince from C O D. Veterans Affairs Office here at C O D. The best of luck and remind her that we have your back as she represents C O D. In the Palm Springs Veterans Parade this afternoon. I'd like to congratulate those who worked so hard and diligently. I'd like to congratulate those who worked so hard and diligently for our COD's success on behalf of Latino ex-students. Congratulations to all of our students for making your dreams come true. Congratulations and thank you to all of our College of the Desert family in helping to make these dreams come true and for helping all of our students achieve the American dream. Congratulations to all of our Kansas State University Educational Leadership doctoral students on their success. And I just wanted to let the public aware of the fact that I have been looking into and working with the National Trustees Organization, ACCT. I'm really studying up hard and also with the CCC, the Triple CT, on addressing the basic needs of our students here at COD and across the country. I've been attending virtual seminars on the basic needs. That includes housing insecurity, food insecurity, transportation insecurity, and something that many times we don't think of, but one that I know when it was brought up at the ACCT conference, one day after our luncheon, our guest speaker addressed the fact of single parents, not just females, but also males that might have a small child or an infant that they have to take care of while they are trying to attend college. Or maybe it's the school-aged children, or maybe it's multiple children. I found myself in that predicament when I was going back to college. I remember the difficulties that I had. And, you know, we try to think that, you know, well, 40 years ago, 30 years ago, things were different. Yes, they were, but those problems still persist. And I will be asking for a future agenda item on that so that we can look and see what we are doing to meet the needs of these students, to meet the needs of all of our students, and to make it easier for them. Also, one of the other concerns that I had was, we are still Zooming a lot. Some of the conferences that I attend are Zoomed, and that's after I've been at work all day on the computer. And I know that other individuals have the same issues. So Zoom fatigue is still with us. It has not gone away. And then it has been stated by many in the public, COVID-19, what are the procedures? What are we doing about that? Another area of connectedness that I'm looking into with ACCT and the Triple CT is the power of connection with minority male success for our minority male students. What is the, how are they, their needs being met? Because many times, we address the fact of females because we see them as the minority, but we're finding more and more that in higher education, the male is becoming the minority because they have to go out and still make money and provide sometimes for their families. So their needs are not being addressed. So those are just some of the things that I've been doing this last month, and I just wanted to report that to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Perez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to start off by thanking all of our veterans. Thank you for allowing us to assemble and to give us the freedom to govern and practice democracy. A thank you and a day in your honor is simply not enough. I would like to congratulate all our athletes as well. You all are killing it. Keep up the great work. And I'd also like to congratulate our college here for being recognized with the 2021 Equity Champion of the Higher Education Award for its high proportion of its Latinx students who earn associate's degrees. What a great accomplishment, everyone. And I'll close with saying, and I'll speak for myself, but I think a few of my colleagues probably share the same sentiment, that all the decisions that I have made over the past few months have been with COD's best interests in mind and complete transparency, which is something in the community are not used to from COD. I can understand it can be shocking, and there may be some uncertainty, but we'll keep working with different city officials. I will also not succumb to bullying from the same people in the community. I'm here to serve the students, and we'll keep doing what I believe is in their best interest. I will also make sure Dr. Garcia has all the tools she needs to succeed in order to best serve our students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Perez. Okay, for myself, I look forward to the startup of our street fair. I understand that we'll be starting up in the beginning of December. I'm very excited for that to happen, and I know that our vendors are also very excited. So we'll be welcoming them back with open arms. Thank you. And my last item, I want to join my colleagues in remembering that today is Veterans Day. We are extremely proud of our veterans and say thank you to the men and women who have served and are currently serving in all branches of the military. The sacrifices made for our freedoms, your strength and courage will not be forgotten, and I salute you. Thank you. Okay, President Garcia.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I have a few updates in regards to very exciting news. Next slide, please. The Spring 2022 Retention and Reengagement Grant. This is a grant that will be offered to our students under a pilot program during Spring 2022. It will be, the cost will be covered under the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund HERF-III. Through this grant, students will be awarded $100 for every credit course in which they enroll, up to $1,800. For non-credit courses such as Adult Basic Education and English as a Second Language Non-Credit, students will be awarded between $25 to $150 per course, depending upon the hours required for completion. The announcements will be advertised soon in regards to this opportunity. We believe that it'll definitely benefit our most needy students that have been impacted by the pandemic. And I want to ensure that I thank BP Baker and the entire team who has made this a reality, and we look forward to supporting our students through this effort. Next slide. The trustees have mentioned the distinguished award for College of the Desert being named statewide lead and ex-equity champion. The 2020 award is a recognition of the tremendous work that College of the Desert team places in ensuring our students are succeeding. And we are recognized for lead and ex-students who have earned an associate degree for transfer. This recognition is bestowed to us, College of the Desert, by Campaign for College Opportunity, and it focuses on highlighting the percentage of College of the Desert graduates heading to four-year university. So we thank everyone that contributes to student success. This is a team effort and tremendous achievement. Next slide. The trustees have requested that I provide an update on College of the Desert's radio station. College of the Desert's radio station is fully online, and I'm going to read a report that was provided by Dr. Neri and Dean Sarah Butler. It is lengthy, but it's important that I share the details in regards to the update. And the trustees were provided a copy, and Trustee Yant was emailed a copy, so I, please bear with me. College of the Desert's radio station is fully online. The FCC license and the KCOD call letters were forfeited in August 2021 for the following reasons. Per FCC guidelines and the licensing agreement that listed Palm Springs as a city of coverage, the AM transmitter should have covered Palm Springs, which it was never strong enough to do at its site in Cathedral City. As a Class C station, KCOD AM was 1,000-watt station, which is not strong. Taken together with its high frequency, KCOD AM did not cover the entire valley. The FM translator was only 12 watts and could not offset the lack of the AM transmitter coverage. To avoid violating the terms of the licensing agreement, the district applied for a run silent authorization with the FCC, which afforded us a year to try to relocate the transmitter closer to Palm Springs while also avoiding interference with other stations' frequencies. The run silent authorization agreement expired in August 2021. Prior to the expiration of the agreement, the dean of Social Sciences and Arts worked with an engineer and real estate agents to see if there was any suitable land for lease or purchase. She also worked with a local radio producer to see if his land was suitable. In addition, she attempted to contact the landlord of the site where the transmitter is located to get the station turned on temporarily so that the district could not apply for another run silent authorization. None of these avenues were successful. The move away from terrestrial stations to online radio. Colleges have been shutting down their terrestrial radio stations or moving to internet-based radio, which does not require the infrastructure of a traditional terrestrial radio station. The College of the Desert radio station has been operating as a fully online station since March 2020. Students taking radio production courses are still producing content that airs on the online station. While the radio production courses tend to be low-enrolled, we have had enough students to fill some of those courses, 25 students total in the past few semesters. The move to fully online radio and the pandemic has thus not deterred a normal number of students from taking the radio production courses. As such, the faculty are currently looking into expanding the radio production offerings to include more relevant courses such as podcasting to try to reach more students. Development of new media courses aligns with the following trend. Community colleges are moving away from radio production programs and toward multimedia certificates which connect students to more employable fields such as digital journalism, TV, film, and music production. As of Spring 2020, one student is pursuing the Basic Radio Production Certificate at College of the Desert. Students would be better served if the district offered more general education media courses and a film, TV, and electronic media certificate, and more media courses relevant to today's trends and technologies. Finally, taken together with new courses such as podcasting, social media design, and promotion, the college's online radio station will continue to serve our students into the 21st century. Focus can shift away from the archaic FCC regulations regarding terrestrial radio and toward employable skills such as marketing the online station and developing more modern content and program. That concludes the update regarding the radio station. Next slide. This slide includes some of the activities that I participated since our last board meeting. It does not include all of them, but I wanted to highlight that Trustee Gonzalez and I had the opportunity to have dinner with Assemblymember Garcia and Assemblywoman Luz Rivas and other community members. It was a great evening, and I'm just extremely grateful for the support, the commitment to work with College of the Desert and to serve our students and our community together. Next slide. I want to conclude once again by thanking all the employees of College of the Desert for their tremendous efforts, by thanking and honoring our veterans, and by highlighting this picture with our students. The students are the reason why we're here, and it's, they are the reason why we work as hard as we do. And I just want to thank our student leaders for ensuring that they try to engage the many students who have been disengaged during the pandemic. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Great news about KCOD. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be considered for approval by a single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and considered separately in the action agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
There is a motion by Trustee Perez. Is there a second?
Second.
And there is a second by Trustee Stefan. Is there any discussion?
I have a question before I pull it. Will the quarterly financial status report, will there be a report on that separately?
Yes, it will be pulled in order for that report to be explained.
So I'd like to pull that one then.
I'm sorry, what is the item number?
It's 9.06.
Okay. Is there any other item, Trustee Stefan? I'm sorry, was that a no?
I think that was, I think that was it. That was it.
That's it? Thank you. Any other items? Okay, hearing none. There's no further discussion? So then we will be approving the, all the items with the exception of item number 9.06. Thank you for the thumbs up, Carlos. After 11 months, I finally got it right. Okay. Roll call vote, President Garcia.
Student, Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Yes.
Trustee Feres?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay, so now we will move on to 11.01, the action agenda. Items pulled from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Do I have a motion to approve item 9.06 as presented or amended? So move. Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll go ahead and say it.
Okay. Voice Chair press seconds. Discussion. Trustee Stefan?
I just, I thought we were going to have a report on that.
So VP Ramat is going to explain the report. Can we pull up the report?
Morning, John.
Good morning. Is there, yeah, I was going to say, if we can increase that eye chart a little bit. Good morning, Madam Chair, and trustees, and Dr. Garcia, and all the guests and colleagues. I appreciate the chance to come forward and go over this report. We report to the Chancellor's Office four times a year on our financial statement or stand, status. And this is our first quarter report, and it ends September 30th. So this report is pretty early in the year in that when we start looking at budget and thing, it doesn't look any different from our adopted budget because this is within two weeks of when the board adopted the budget. So there's not a lot of change in here. What it does provide, though, if you look at the top, it has some actuals for the three prior years, and then what our budget or projected amount is for this current year. And it starts with the revenues up on the top, and you can see that for this year, we're expecting essentially flat revenues, down just a little bit overall. But if you look down below at item B3, our expenditures, predictably tend to head up most of the time. And so then there's the line that says revenues under and over expenditures, and then it goes down to our fund bound. goes down to our fund balance and our beginning fund balance and then ending fund balance based on projection. So for the current year, in our current budget, our budget is projected essentially to be a flat budget with just revenues being over expenditures by just under $60,000, a very small amount. If you look at item F1, you can see that we've been maintaining a very healthy fund balance. And if you go back, you know, a couple of years, at 22% and 27, and this year, when we closed out, it was close to 36, 30.6%. That's a pattern that is very similar to other community colleges, is the, a lot of expenses have kind of ramped down from being in person, and it's a little bit less expensive when you're not operating facilities. And also, there's a lot of hold harmless provisions right now because enrollments are down significantly statewide, and yet there's a fair amount of money that's been pumped in. And so most districts saw a pretty large pop in their ending fund balance. And we recently brought to the budget subcommittee an article that showed a history of the past several years of ending fund balances of colleges, and we're pretty well right in line with kind of the average of where community colleges are. And it's a good place to be because those resources allow us to plan and change and pivot as needed. So the next line down that talks about annualized attendance FTS, you'll see there's a couple empty boxes. Those boxes are populated by the chancellor's office, so we're not able to enter anything in there. They used to, it's included now more than for just reference. We used to populate that, but now they pull it directly from the attendance reporting that is done on the 320 report. The next section down shows our cash position, and it's the cash that we have in our hand as of September 31st, or 31st, 30th. And you can see on this that, you know, our cash right now is pretty good, and what that really reflects was last year, we were hit with deferrals, and they paid most of those deferrals back over the summer. So we got a little bit of pop in our cash for the moment. And that is something that chancellor's office monitors to make sure that we're maintaining cash to be able to meet our operating requirements. So the next section down is then a snapshot of our adopted budget and then our current budget, and then where we're at to date. Again, that adopted and current are the same because it reflects the budget that was adopted two weeks before the cutoff for this report. And you can also see that, you know, we're just starting the year, and we've received roughly 6% of our revenue, and we've expended about 20% of our budget. Okay, and if you can go down, the next section has to do with bargaining. And during the last quarter, we finished and the board approved the bargaining for the classified with a three-year contract. And so we report to the chancellor's office what the increases are projected to be over the next three years. And then also, you'll see under the first column, the pagination drops off, you can, it just doesn't print very well on this particular report, but the first two columns are management. And the board re, had approved an increase for management for this year in August, so that's being reported to the chancellor's office. So then the next items down below have to do with, have we had any negative actions or any kind of borrowings, you know, significant fiscal problems and that sort of thing? And we reported no on all of those. And it's a pretty brief report and pretty succinct, and that's all I have for that.
Thank you, John. Trustee Stefan, any questions? Are there any other questions from the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. If there's no further discussion, trustee Yant, I know you're out there. Do you have any questions, sir?
No questions.
Okay. There's no further discussion, roll call vote, please. President Garcia?
Student trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Fades?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you again, John, for that presentation. We'll move on to item number 12. This is 12.01, Resolution 111121-2. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed 110 million aggregate principal amount of bonds of Desert Community College District by a negotiated sale pursuant to a bond purchase agreement, prescribing the terms of sale, approving the form of, and authorizing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, and a continuing disclosure certificate, approving the form of, and authorizing the distribution of an official statement for the bonds, and authorizing related actions in connection therewith. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 111121-2 as presented?
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by vice chair Perez in a second, by trustee Stefan. Dr. Garcia, do you have any comments on this, Simon?
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, with your approval, I would like to ask Mr. Adam Buer, CEO, president of Fieldman, Rollup, and Associates to share study session item 16.01, General Obligation Bonds and Refunding Bonds Presentation.
Okay.
Great, thank you. And my name is Adam Bauer, and as is introduced, I'm Fieldman, Rollup, and Associates, who have served as your municipal advisor. And on my screen, I'm not able to see the presentation. Are others able to see it?
Yes.
Okay, and it's come up in a box now. Okay, so the purpose for the items in front of you this afternoon, or I'm sorry, this morning, are three things, and they're all listed on the cover of that presentation. If to the far left, we have the 85 million in the traditional tax-exempt new money projects from our 2016 election. And then that one is called series 2021A-1. And then we have 2021A-2. And this is a taxable series, which gives the college a little more flexibility with timing and projects that they use for the money. But both, all the things being funded fall underneath the bond measure. So it's just different ways of structuring it to allow for some flexibility. Then the item on the far right, what that is, is that is a refinancing of some of the college's existing bonds. And so we're combining that with all these other activities, the gain efficiencies. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Well, we've highlighted here, in the next few slides, we've kept the format of what I've shown you in the past. To the far left, there is that AAA MMD, the Municipal Market Data, AAA being the highest rating a governmental entity can achieve. These are what the interest rates are for the 10-year and their 30-year maturities. The 10-year is in blue, so it's a little bit lower rate, and the 30-years in red. And you can see, we generally, it looks a lot like a financial graph, some ups and downs. There's a bit of an anomaly there towards the left, and that was when we all shut down for COVID-19. Investors, we call it the Sell Everything Rally. They basically sold your bonds, right, they sold stocks, they sold it all and wanted to go to cash. And then the Federal Reserve basically dropped rates, overnight rate down to almost zero. And so then investors said, well, we don't want zero. So they went back, they reinvested back into things like your bonds, stocks. You saw kind of a really dramatic stock market rally during this time, and that was exactly what we saw with bonds, where money flowed back in. To the far right shows the treasury. So some of what we're doing is taxable here. And so the taxable is detailed there to the far right. You can just see kind of how we generally traded flat, but also trended in an upward direction, and we've seen a little bit more of that recently. So now to the next page, slide two. What we try to detail here is put some of this in perspective. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay, great. So to the chart to the far left here, it's that MMD, but instead of just showing a 10-year and a 30-year, we show years 1 through 30. And on the far left, it's interest rate to the bottom is years. Then the light blue bars, what they represent are the range of interest rates for each one of those maturities going back to 2005. What that red line represents is that MMD as of 10/26/2021. So you're probably noticing that red line is near the bottom of those bar charts, and what that shows you is we're at or near the lowest points, but we've actually lifted off the lowest point. It was a little bit, if we would have done this about two months ago, we'd be showing that red line just on the absolute bottom of those blue bars. So it's still an excellent time to be in the market, just not as good as it was about two months ago. So the far right, kind of want to help you understand why this is happening. Green bars represent money flowing into municipal bond funds. A red bar represents money flowing out of municipal bond funds. And that red, that big red bar that you see there, that was when we recognized that COVID-19 was in the US and we were shutting down that Sell Everything Rally. And then you show, you see some pretty consistent green bars, but if you go all the way to the right, you see a little green blip. What's happened there is investors are still putting money into municipal bond funds, but not at the same pace that they were. So this is our demand. So if we have a similar amount of supply of bonds and a demand is less, you can see why rates have started to trend upward a bit. So now I've gotten into some real macro technical data, and I want to shift to micro and get to your assessed value. And on the next slide, we give your historical assessed value, and your assessed values perform very well. If you, some new data too that I haven't shown you before, is your fiscal year 2021/22 assessed value. It grew at 5.19. This is greater than your 10-year average of 4.16, but less than your 20-year average of 5.85. So all this says, your assessed value is growing at a very healthy level. This is a very positive thing for your bond program, probably the most important factor for how much you can issue and when. If we go to the next slide, please. What we detailed here is your ability to, or your, not your ability, your summary of your outstanding debt bonds, and we have them all listed there, whenever issued, how much is originally issued, how much outstanding, and call dates. And one of the things to point out is, one of the transactions that we're looking at refunding is those 2016 GEO bonds. And even though the call date isn't until 2026, meaning we have to put money in escrow until that period of time, even after doing that, we're still achieving the savings that we've detailed later on. So we're having to put money in escrow for a period of time, but also because rates are so low, we're still able to, or hopefully we're able to achieve the savings that we've detailed on a later slide. Next slide, please. On your 2004 measure, series B, we're just managing this one. You can see there kind of what we've issued to date and the, how it, how the, the tax rate and the maximum tax rate compare over time, but we have no authorization remaining on this one. It's just managing it and when opportunities present themselves, trying to refinance these to achieve taxpayer savings. So this one's working as planned. So now your 2016 measure on the next page, we've detailed here, once again, very high approval level, 72.7 from your voters. We have the two series that have already been issued, and we're looking at issuing an additional series, and that's why we're here today. But if you look at that chart to the bottom, once again, tax rate per 1,000 on the far left, years at the bottom, you can see the solid colors represent existing debt, and then that shaded mark or the hash mark represents additional series of bonds to be issued as we, as we continue here.
Can we stop for one moment because the printing's going above the bar graph, so we can't really see that? Could we, is there any way we could move that?
Miguel, can you modify the captioning?
Is that a possibility so we can actually see the graph part?
He is not able to do that. Casey, can you print out a copy of the PowerPoint presentation for the trustees, please?
If we pause for just a moment, we can momentarily remember.
Just momentarily, thank you. Okay.
So maybe it'd be helpful, why we do that if I just describe what's in the chart. So the far left is tax rate per 1,000. At the bottom access are years. And what we show there is the red line represents the $20, $19.50 that we targeted when we asked the voters for support in this measure. The 2017 refunding is detailed there in light green. And then a slightly darker green, we have the series A bonds under the 16 measure. If you recall, we used the 16 measure to do a refinancing that lowered taxes on the other measure. And then we also have the blue bars in there, which they start out right up against the 1950, and they drop down about $12 per 1,000 because we knew we'd have an additional series of bonds that we wanted to layer in here. And so then, what we try to demonstrate with the bar charts on the tax rates, the line is our maximum target, and then there's this hashed bar, and what that represents is capacity that we haven't issued to date. So that means we would continue to pursue this program. So with that, I'll maybe pause until folks can actually see what I tried to just describe. Would it help the group if I tried to do a screen share? Would that enlarge it?
Well, we're able to see it now, Adam.
Oh, okay.
It was just that, you know, when it had the type of the words up there, it covered that up, so I wasn't able to see any of it.
Okay, so it feels like we're in good shape. How about this, before I go on to the next slide then, any questions on slide six?
I think we're good.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so if we could go on to the next slide. This is our refunding bonds, and what we're looking at here is the bonds that we've already issued, and can we get taxpayer savings right now? And we can, there's gross savings at 12.7, and then a net present value savings. I've always told you, we should look at savings as if they were in today's dollars, and that's what a net present value calc is, and that's at 9.95 million. So there's a percentage there at 6.5, and generally, I've told you, we should give it strong consideration if we could get to 5% or more. And we, I always say at 6.5, we're over that 5% mark. We then detail the annual savings, about 795,000, and then we have this number, negative arbitrage. So this number is by having that money sit in an escrow account for that, between now and 2026, is kind of having that, those bonds outstanding while also having the new bonds outstanding. You have this, this negative arbitrage, but even after taking that into consideration, we're able to achieve the savings that we have because taxable rates are just so low right now. So I wanted to kind of lay all those different factors out there, but between now and 2037, this GEO bond measure would get gross savings, so actual savings to taxpayers are 12.7, and then net present value savings, if you present value that dollar back to today, and I guess it's a 9.95, if we're able to achieve what we tried, what we showed a few weeks ago in the market. We have seen the market go up the last two days. So these are, this is like an IPO. We have not actually sold these bonds, these are projections, and we do these, I will show you a schedule, though essentially, we're looking to sell these the week of Thanksgiving. On the next slide, I'm sorry, page eight, what we've detailed here is the new money for projects. And we talked about the A1 and A2, broken up between tax-exempt and taxable, and what we're trying to do is get a project fund of almost 110 million. We have 109,702,000. And that's really what the goal of this piece is, to get that much money for projects. Next slide, please. I detailed that we are looking to price the bonds that week of Thanksgiving. We're seeking your approval today, and should you give approval today, what you're doing is you're approving the documents to form, and you're allowing district staff to move forward as long as they pursue the transaction within the parameters of the resolutions, just like you've done in the past. And should you take that action, we'd then be able to hopefully price the bonds the 23rd of November, and then close the bonds and have everything all wrapped up by December 7th, and that would be the day that funds are available for projects. So those are all the slides that we've prepared with district staff. If there are any questions for me, both Jason and I are here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
That's a very quick turnaround time if we're going to
That's a very quick turnaround time if we're going to sell the bonds in, what is that, like 14 days, two weeks?
So generally that is a, well, first of all, with the way the market's been bouncing around, I want to move as quickly as we can. But the, the second piece to that is there's a document, the preliminary official statement, it's the thickest document in that whole packet that you have. That document needs, would be sent to investors tomorrow. And we want to give them some time with it because there's a lot of other transactions in the market. We want to be able to give them some time to review that. And also the underwriter will be calling them and, you know, see if they'll be willing to buy your bonds. But that takes about that week to two-week period to do that. And that is a standard timeline. I, I would not be in any way concerned about that timeline.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Trustee Yant, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Dr. Garcia, so we're going to be getting a copy of this presentation?
Yes.
Okay. And I wonder if we could also include Adam's contact information? Adam, if you don't mind, if we have some questions, can we follow up with you?
Yeah, I have no problem with my contact information being out there. I would just like to circle back with Mr. Ramat to, so he's in the loop on anything that's asked directly of me.
Right, great, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, thank you so much, Adam. A roll call vote, Dr. Garcia?
Student trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes.
Trustee Estefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you again, Adam.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
We'll now move on to item 12.02, which is Resolution 111121-3. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District authorizing the sale and issuance of not to exceed 190 million aggregate principal amount of Desert Community College District general obligation refunding bombs, bonds in one or more series, approving the forms of and authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more escrow agreements, bond purchase agreements, and continuing disclosure certificates. Approving the form of one or more official statements for the bonds and authorizing related actions in connection therewith. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 111121-3 as presented?
Let's all move.
I have a motion from trustee Stefan, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Perez, any discussion? President Garcia, do you have any other comments?
No other comments, if there's questions, Adam will answer them.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, Dr. Garcia?
Student trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant? Trustee Yant?
Yes.
Trustee Estefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item action, item number 13, Administrative Services, 13.01. Public hearing and approval of the 50% law exemption for the Desert Community College District. Dr. Garcia?
Madam Chair, at this time and with your approval, I would like to ask VP John Ramat to share study session, item 16.02, 50% law exemption.
If there are no objections, hearing none, John, please proceed.
Thank you. This is an item that is, one that's always a challenge to deal with. So the district is asking for, to be able to seek an exemption from the 50% law. And what I'm going to do is give you a little bit of background on it and then talk about the issue that we have currently. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So what is the 50% law? So this is a very old law that started back in the 50s and was passed in 1961. And it really was aimed at the K-14 system. And really what the law was designed to do was to make sure that especially lower elementary classes didn't get too large. They were trying to put in a mechanism to ensure that, that class sizes stayed within a certain realm. And what it does is it requires that 50% of district unrestricted expenditures be spent on salaries and benefits in the classroom. So that includes salaries and benefits for instructors and certain classified staff that work directly in the classroom with students like lab techs, instructional assistants, and the like. What's not included in there is it excludes counselors, librarians, instructional materials and supplies, and other direct student services that we offer. This law does apply to K-14. And when I worked in K-12, we had to report on this every year, but K-12 doesn't really have a problem meeting it. It's not unusual for them to meet it by 60, 65%, based on the way that they're structured. We're structured a lot differently in that we have, we have a lot of different services that they don't have. For example, financial aid and some of the other things that we have that were structured completely different. So some of the challenges with that, next slide, please. Many districts, college districts, this is a perpetual issue. This has been a longstanding issue because most college districts really have a hard time meeting it. They always run very close to the edge. In fact, last year for us, we met it by at 50.04%. We've met it as high as 53% within recent years, but it's always been very close. That's also not unusual. And it's a little bit challenging because the further we go on, it gets harder and harder to meet because the world is changing a lot. For example, back in 1961, the technology that was used is a lot different. We're much more reliant on it. We have a lot more services that are offered through technology. And all of those platforms, they're not counted, they're counted on the quote wrong side of the 50%. So it adds pressure to the, the wrong side in being able to meet that. In addition, you know, the, the mission of the community college, we've long focused on access and really done a good job of providing access. But the completion and retention has always been a challenge to, to address that. We've added more and more services to, to support the students, such as additional counseling and outreach and supports to close equity gaps. And any of those things that, that we pay for out of the unrestricted general fund wind up going on the wrong side of the 50% law because they're not salaries and benefits in the classroom. Next slide, please. So the penalty for non-compliance, if we don't get an exemption, and the, the penalty is you have your apportionment reduced in a future year by the same dollar-for-dollar amount that you missed it by. So if you miss it by a million dollars, your apportionment in the future at some point will be reduced by a million dollars. And it also results in a state audit finding for non-compliance with the 50% law. So next slide, please. So the basis for exempting, for an exemption request are two things, serious hardship or salaries of classroom instructors are higher than a cohort. Currently, so the serious hardship is basically based on, on the expenditures that you made. If you did not make those expenditures, you would have wound up in a, in a pretty tough spot. And I'm going to explain as we get into ours and what our basis is. The other one is a very complex and strange formula that's found only in ed code to determine what a cohort is. And for that one, we're not going to be seeking exemption under that. Initially, we were looking to seek under that, but as we got into the, further into the calculation, we, we found that we did not, that we're not eligible for that one. So next slide, please. So for us, we found, and this is at the time that we posted the board agenda, that we fell short by 651,880. Now, you may recall that we brought this to your attention back when we passed the, the budget in September. And at that time, the initial, what it looked like as we closed the books is we were off by about 1.1 million dollars. So the, the difficulty with this law is a lot of times you don't know where you're at until you close the books. You know, a lot of people, it's, it's one of those things where, where as I discuss it with my peers and I'll say, hey, it looks like we might be having this problem. They say, well, gosh, we haven't even finished that calculation yet. And it's, you know, October and they're saying, we don't know if we're meeting it or not. So the difference now that going from that 1.1 in, in September down to the 60, 651, is that we have been working very closely with FICMAT, and I'll get into that a little bit, to identify things that were either coded incorrectly or could be coded differently that we had not coded. It's something we worked very hard on and scrubbed constantly. But there's also continually changing requirements and definitions, so trying to keep up with that can be challenging. The main reason that this is, we're bringing this to you this year, and I doubt you've ever seen anything like this because it's not very common. It doesn't happen very often, even though districts are very much right on the edge most of the time. But for this year, in 1920, the, the pandemic hit and then we had the malware attack at the, in August of 20. We, we just got hammered with the drop in enrollment. And what happened is enrollments definitely, costs follow enrollment. So when we had a drop in enrollment, we had a drop in our instructional costs. And we knew this was coming on and we knew, so we did a lot of things that we don't typically do, like we ran very low enrolled classes. So we had been building our efficiencies and running the college much more efficiently by the number of FTSs we earned for every faculty that's in a room. We'd been really growing on those efficiencies, that's really important. But when it came to this, we knew that we needed just to get bodies in rooms. So we ran lower enrollment classes and, and our efficiencies actually dropped. And this is going to be a random number to you, from 550 down to 475 from 1920 to 2021. Because of that drop in general enrollments, we tried to keep classes open. But at the same time, when you have the number of students disappear that we did, there's just certain classes that are not going to run at all because there's no students for them. So our adjunct costs had dropped by a million and a half from the prior year. And this is really what the situation is. Due to COVID, we didn't have the students, we didn't run the sections, our adjunct costs dropped by a million and a half. And you can tell that we fell short by 650, 651,000 on the 50% law. So had, and, and one of the other things that, that is relevant to this is that, you know, we've been growing so fast over the, you know, last few years. You know, you've heard us say so many times that we're the fastest growing college in the state. We grew so fast that our, on average, we were increasing adjunct expenditures by over 9% a year, from year to year to year. So as this came through to try to predict, oh, we're going to have a drop in that, was very, you know, it's not something that, it, it, this is more of a reaction than, than something planned, obviously. And that's the way everything with COVID is. But again, our, we, we actually decreased by 1.5 million in our adjunct costs. Had they even just been the same as the year before, we would have met the 50% law at 51.59, we would have been fine. So this is again, all about COVID. Next slide, please. This is a visual that shows how those expenses track. On the left, those are our reported annual FTS going back to 1213. On the right, those are our total instructional adjunct expenditures. And you can see those two graphs have a very similar shape. Okay, next slide, please. So what we're bringing before you today is that we're requesting an exemption from the 50% law on the basis of serious hardship. Again, you know, this is not, you know, mismanagement. This isn't something that, you know, we just ignore or anything like that. This is something that's come about through very extraordinary circumstances. And just like other extraordinary circumstances, there's been a lot of waivers and there's been a lot of supports and things like that, but not particularly in this area. But it's, it's, it's hit us, so we are looking to do this today. Next slide, please. So the next step on this is that we're, we're requesting that the board take, take action to make a finding of the basis for non-compliance and approval of the exemption request. From there, we submit our request to the chancellor's office on December 1st or by December 1st. And then the chancellor's office is going to review that and make a recommendation to the Board of Governors. The Board of Governors then at some future date would approve or deny the request. And then COD also potentially, depending on what their finding was, they, we may have to provide a plan to them to ensure future requirements. If we don't receive an exemption right now on the basis of that dollar amount, we would be looking at a reduction in the future of apportionment by that same 651. And basically the way the law states is that that apportionment reduction is done in the third year after the year in which the deficiency took place. So it wouldn't be this year or next year, it'd be the following year that, potentially. And in the meantime, there's things that we can do to work with the chancellor's office to, to mitigate this particular situation. So next slide, please. We do have ongoing concerns because obviously our enrollment is still down. And, you know, because of that, if we don't restructure somehow, non-compliance could continue to be an issue. So the long-term remedy, you really only have two things, is you either increase instructional costs by adding additional courses or you decrease non-instructional costs. Structurally, you know, our, our college is sized for an institution with over 15,000 students. And now it's, you know, it's around, it's a little more than 10,000. So, you know, structurally, we're structured for a lot bigger college. And the idea is, is we want to grow out of this, that's the best way to do this. But we do have a lot of things that are beyond our control, like PERS rates, which are increasing much faster than STIRS, which means our classified folks, which are primarily non-instructional, wind up costing the district more and putting pressure on that. When you're real close to it, that, that adds a lot of significant pressure. In addition, our utilities, our IT systems, and the software costs in particular since the malware event, we've spent a lot of money making sure that that doesn't happen again through different types of things. And those are all costs that are on the wrong side of the 50% law. So again, going forward, next slide, please. The best remedy for us is to increase enrollments and the associated instructional costs. And if we're not able to, well, and also for us, we try to reduce expenses on the wrong side wherever possible. In the long run, that might mean that we might have to right-size our institution to the workload that we have. That's the big challenge is that, you know, our workload is much lower right now. So next slide, please. So to give you an idea what we've done too, is when we contacted the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, FICMAT. You're probably familiar with them when we had our FTS issue way back when, because they came into the district. Somebody called them, it's always better when you call them first. So we contacted them and said, you know, here's the thing, we have this, we are running blind because you don't have a lot of information on other colleges around to know what the situation is. And we want to make sure that we're structured appropriately, that we're doing the right things, that, you know, are there things that you can do? So FICMAT is working with us on a number of areas. We have a contract with them that, that we're bringing, that was part of the action today. And they're doing three things with us. First off, they're minimizing the current liability. As you saw, we went from 1.1 million down to 600 and something. And that is FICMAT working directly with us to identify things that can be reclassified or coded differently. I expect that to continue down. Our best case scenario is that we get that so low before the deadlines to submit things that we can actually pull that request back and not even ask for the exemption. That would be the ideal situation. They, and I do have a lot of confidence that we're going to get it much lower because since that time where we reported the 600,000, we're now in the mid 500,000. And that, and Tony, our Director of Fiscal Services, has been burning a lot of midnight oil, working with the FICMAT consultant to scrub through every single line on ours in order to try to get rid of that, that issue. So so for our future outlook, next slide, please. There is a lot of concerns that are, that are here because I'm learning a whole lot as we go through this. The interesting part is that there is nobody at the chancellor's office who is there now. They've had such turnover that have ever dealt with an exemption request before. In fact, the only notification they got was from us and from Calbright, which Calbright's the online college that now is not going to be going forward. So we don't want to be part of that club. But there are a number of districts that currently are not meeting the law. They have not filed for requests, but they're not meeting it. And the interesting part is there are three basic aid districts that are not going to meet it. In fact, their, their percentage is down in the low 40% range for some of them. And the interesting part about it is because the penalty is a reduction And the interesting part about it is, because the penalty is a reduction in your apportionment, a basic aid district gets money that meets their calculated revenue and beyond. So they get more money than, so they don't get any aid from the state, it all comes from property tax. And because of that, there's no apportionment to penalize them with. So in other words, if you've got enough money, you don't have to comply with the law. There's no penalty. Which, you know, that concerns me. Now, FICMAT has noted to us that they're working with probably six other districts that have not met compliance, that are not basic aid districts, that have not indicated to the chancellor's office that they're going to do that. The chancellor's office is aware of it. And what they've said to us, and this is what FICMAT has said, is we think that either this current fiscal year or by next year, there could be 20 districts that cannot meet it because of primarily, again, the PERS and the reduction in workload while, you know, we're still having a hard time reducing expenses. You know, there's, we have a lot of structures in place that don't allow us to react quickly to reduce expenditures. So because of that, it's very slow for us to be able to reduce expenditures. And again, a lot of this, you don't know where you're really at until right at the end of the year, after everything's all said and done. And so it's challenging, but that hopefully gives you the background that you need for this item today. And so thank you for your, thank you for letting me present on this.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have several. First off, because they haven't filed the exemption, we really don't know how many other colleges are in the same or similar predicament as we are. Is that correct?
Correct. Again, you know, FICMAT hasn't identified, but they have said that they're working with at least five other districts besides us that are in the same predicament, but did not notify the chancellor's office.
Okay. Another thing, the malware, when that happened, how much did that impact us negatively on that financially?
Well, it didn't impact directly financially, and I'll explain, because, but it impacted our enrollment very significantly. And the reason was, is when we started the fall semester and looking at enrollments, we were on track initially, we were way off, like 30%, and, you know, everybody's very nervous. And then as time went by, as we got closer and closer to school, we were down to where we would be in single-digit drops. So in other words, we got a lot of enrollments right before. And then you can see it on Dr. Martinez's graphs, where the day that the malware hit, from that point, we weren't able to register students, students couldn't contact us and all this, and we wound up losing at least another 10% of students. So the indirect impact was that we had, the direct impact really was, is that that did, because those students weren't there, we weren't running, you know, we didn't have classes, and so that started the downfall and the, the cost for instruction. The actual revenues that we get, because we're under a hold harmless right now with COVID, it didn't impact our revenues negatively, and that was part of the fund balance bump that you saw this year. So it's a weird situation where we have money, but just, we don't have expenses, and we don't have expenses in the right place.
Okay. And then the malware, was there any insurance that upset the cost of actually repairing the system?
The, the insurance doesn't pay for prevention-type things that we're doing in the future, but the insurance did pay for any of the ransom and, you know, any of those associated costs with the consultants that we use to walk us through that, the attorneys that went on. That was all paid through our insurance, and it was a very good thing that we had insurance for that.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Is that trustee Yance?
Yes. Thank you. John, I have three questions. First is, being that other colleges in the past years have made these requests, to your knowledge, are they frequently approved or not approved?
Now, my understanding is, is it's been years since anybody's made a request, but in the past, the statewide labor organizations are very interested in this, and so they see the 50% as kind of a means to protect academic salaries in the classroom. And so they fight against it very hard, and because of that, there's a lot of pressure. And my understanding is, is that they have not approved typically requests when they came before them, but this, again, was years ago. Because it's been, yeah, it's been at least since before 2017 that a request has come forward.
And conditions have changed, obviously. Second question, it just seems strange, you said there are other districts that you have knowledge of in this situation, but have not reported that to the chancellor's office. That just seems strange. Why is that?
Well, they feel that it would actually be better for them to just take the penalty rather than to even try for the exemption. And again, if we get it close enough, yeah, probably, because we'll have to go before the Board of Governors, make the request. We'll probably get a lot of criticism, you know, why were others able to do it and we weren't? And, you know, there's only so much I know about others, so.
So in other words, you're saying that some districts are basically doing, let's pay the ticket?
Yeah. Correct. And they'll have an audit finding, and then they'll have to pay the penalty, but, and they're not seeking the exemption.
Interesting. Third question is, there seems to be little evidence to argue that enrollments are going to bounce back, so we're looking at probably a multi-year situation here.
Yes.
So your comments on long-term remedies is really pointed. So are we really putting emphasis on looking at those long-term remedies, specifically reducing non-instructional costs?
You know, there's a few things that are, you know, bright spots. We did the SERP last year, the retirement incentive, and we had 44 people take advantage of that. Of those, only 11 of those were faculty. So it was primarily classified, which were primarily on the wrong side of the 50%. And so we looked at a lot of those positions and eliminated positions and delayed hiring or froze or those sort of things. And so we're going to see some savings, and when we do bring people back, they're typically at a lower step with that. In addition, there's money in this year's budget to increase full-time faculty, to increase the percentage towards the state goal of 75% of all credit classes being taught by full-time faculty. So they put some money into the system this year, and because of that, we got an allocation. And they even, they said, we know that enrollments are going down, but we'd like to see what classes you do run being taught by full-time. So for us, that's nine additional instructors, we're getting about $900,000 of ongoing money to increase that. So that'll raise our, that'll raise some of our instructional costs, and again, you know, structurally. But we have to see where we land, and again, it's hard, because you don't always know until towards the end, so.
All right, that speaks about increasing instructional costs, but what about decreasing non-instructional costs?
Yeah, again, we eliminated some positions, we delayed hiring positions, and, you know, essentially, we've done a soft freeze on things that are, that are not directly tied to, you know, life and safety or enrollment. And the hard part is, is a lot of our strategies in supporting students do take a lot of face-to-face, direct, high-touch contact, and so it's kind of a double whammy. You know, we need outreach specialists in order to get people back, but, you know, it's those kind of things. We have a pretty good counselor-to-student ratio, we have, you know, a lot of things that, again, they're very important to our students, but they are on the wrong side of the 50% law.
So are, do we have plans to look at the non-instructional costs to see if there are areas that would not affect student enrollment?
Yes, that's what the FICMAT consultant is helping us with, helping us get some fresh eyes on it. And also, they're able to get the data that we can't, so they can help us compare to other districts and see if there's something that structurally is different, or something along those lines.
I got the impression from their description of that team that they are looking at short-term fixes, but I think I'm looking, questioning about more long-term fixes.
Correct. And that is one of the things that, that's part of their scope, the immediate was, you know, the short term, and then, then looking at that longer term. So that is part of the scope of what they're doing with us.
So what are the negative consequences of having a negative, having this denied?
Well, again, in the third year after noncompliance, we would have our apportionment potentially reduced by that noncompliant amount. And again, that's why we're working to get that liability down to minimize it, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, John, for the presentation, and I ask that you bear with me, because I do have some, quite a bit of questions. So would you say that the reason we're in this position is mostly due to COVID?
Absolutely. Again, I'm completely, if our adjunct costs had even been flat, and they hadn't been flat in seven years, if they'd even been flat, we would have sailed right through it without a problem.
Okay. I guess, so you're saying that most of the salaries, or our salaries that are used on classified staff or student services, is that a correct statement?
So most classified salaries are, tend to be on the wrong side of 50%, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Other than lab techs, ISAs, that sort of thing, folks who are working directly with students in the classroom, all the rest of them count on the wrong side.
And we've had to increase classified staff in order to meet the demands of our students?
Part of it too, you know, keep in mind, we also had SB, I think it was SB 98, that prohibited us from laying off custodians. And part of it was, they were concerned about layoffs of people, and we made the choice to keep everybody employed. And so all of those are on the wrong side, you know, and they don't go down with enrollment necessarily automatically like the adjunct costs tend to.
John, you mentioned that districts face this year, this issue year in and year out, and there may be other districts that face this issue in the next few weeks, is that I understand that correctly?
Yeah, last year, I was looking, and out of the 72 districts, 20 of them made it by less than a percent. In other words, they were 50 points something, they were under 51%. So there's always constantly a large chunk, and they tend to especially be some of the smaller, mid-sized districts like us that ride real close to it.
After we file for this exemption, is there anything that we can do in order to get this penalty thrown out or maybe reduced?
Yeah, in fact, it wouldn't, if they deny the exemption, it would be working with them to say, you know what, we're going to make it up by adding to those expenditures in the next year. You know, there are things that we can do to kind of negotiate, to mitigate, so that we can plan for it.
Okay. And I guess, after all this information, it sounds like that we will not be meeting this threshold whether we hire another vice president or not, correct?
So as far as that, hiring goes, and looking at the duties, and this is one of the things that we've been able to look at, is that I believe that between the duties of the president and how we code those, and the person coming on and the duties that they're going to be doing, that we will be able to bring that without any impact to the, direct impact to the 50% law, because of the nature of the duties.
That's great to hear. And I guess the last point that I want to make is that we can afford another malware attack. Where are we at with that? Would it be possible to get an update from yourself and our IT department in the next few weeks for something like that?
Yeah, we can absolutely get information on that for you, because we've done a lot to, and continue to do a lot to mitigate that. But, you know, keep in mind, they're getting more clever, and we're under attack every single day, and you still see about it in the news. So, you know, they're on the move, but we're also on the move, and we'd be happy to provide information.
Awesome. Thank you, John. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Perez. John, you answered the questions I had with regard to the early retirement that we had back then, and the savings from that. We also received a large amount of CARES Act funding. So how does that work with where we are today?
So it helps in that with the CARES funding, that money is in our restricted general fund, which isn't part of that calculation. And with the CARES funding, we were able to buy a lot of, a lot of things and do a lot of things, like, you know, even the faculty professional development, that's generally, since it's outside the classroom, it's not coded towards the 50%. So it allowed us to do a lot of activities that we would normally, if it was in the unrestricted general fund, it would put pressure on there. But we were able to do it because we had the relief funds to, you know, and a lot of the software that we got to mitigate things, the PPE, the cleaning supplies, all of those things would have hit us on the wrong side, so that it definitely helped us.
Thanks so much, Sean.
I might say one more thing. John, I appreciate the fact that our college is working with FICMAT, whoever got the brainstorm on that one, because I remember attending, you know, I've been on this place for a long time, but I attended a FICMAT presentation probably 12 years ago, and they said, the biggest mistake people make is not contacting them. So I want to compliment whoever at the college made the decision to contact them, because they will work with groups, and hopefully, we're on top of this, and they're aware that we are trying to rectify the problem, and that we're not trying to hide it like so many people try to do when they find themselves in this type of predicament. But, and I wish us all the luck with that, because I know that they do try to be considerate. You know, they have rules, and they have to enforce things, but at the same time, they try to work with the colleges. So I want to compliment.
I also want to note that we've also been working very closely with the chancellor's office. I've been working, been on the phone and email and met in person at ACBO with the Assistant Vice Chancellor of Facilities and Finance, Rena Finch, and she has been very responsive. They've been extremely helpful and supportive through all of this, including by allowing us to have extended deadlines and all sorts of things. So it's a really great working relationship.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you again, John. Are there any other questions? Thank you for your presentation, obviously. You can see we have taken this very seriously, so thank you. We are conducting a public hearing to review and discuss the 50% law exemption for the Desert Community College District. Following the public hearing, the Board will take action to approve the 50% law exemption for the Desert Community College District. For the public hearing, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. 15 minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the Board, these time limits may be extended. Would speakers or attendees who wish to address this item please come forward? Comment now in the chat field, or select the Raise Your Hand button to speak. Armando, do we have any speakers?
At this time, there are no speakers. Madam Chair.
Are there any, any additional speakers who wish to address the Board on this matter? Okay. I'm sorry, a three-minute timeline? Oh, 30-second timeline? Okay. I'm sorry, Carlos, I couldn't hear you. All right. So, okay, so we'll allow for 30 seconds? There are no additional speakers who wish to address the Board. Having conducted the public hearing, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees approve the determination that the expenditure of the required amount would have resulted in serious hardship to the Desert Community College District. Is there a motion to approve the 50% law exemption for the Desert Community College District? So move. We have a motion by trustee Stefan. Is there a second?
Second, Perez.
Okay, there is a second by Vice Chair Perez. Any further comments or discussion from the Board? Dr. Garcia, do you have any further comments?
No further comments.
Okay, we will now conduct a roll call vote. Dr. Garcia?
Student trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Yes.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all, and thank you again, John, for your presentation. We'll move on to item number 14, which is administrative services. This is an action item, an agreement for employment on interim executive vice president. Do I have a motion to approve item 14.01 as presented?
So move, Perez.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Perez. Is there a second?
A second, Gonzalez.
Second by trustee Gonzalez. Is there any discussion?
I have a few questions to start off with. First off, what is the actual job title of the executive vice president or the job description with that?
VP Zakovic, can you please?
And do we have the job description? Yes. Are there, because there are brief summary that could be? Or is that?
Wasn't that provided to the board, the job description?
It wasn't included. We could provide a copy right now.
It'd be nice if we could just look at that briefly.
Casey?
I'll bring in a job description.
Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate the fact that we have. One thing I want to say is there was an attachment when we were looking at the agenda a moment ago when it was on our screen. Yeah, the attachment there. Could that be put up so that we could see that? Thank you.
Again, you're going to receive a text from Carlos so that we could pull it up on the website.
While we're waiting, if I can remind the trustees to please silence your cell phones. Dr. Zakovic, this is the job description?
Yes.
And this was the one that has been in existence?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll see at the bottom of the document the date that it was approved by the board.
I will say that I'm happy that this is coming forward. I recall, we asked of something similar to this of our previous president, and he wasn't willing to do it. So I'm happy that we're bringing this forward and for approval today, and we'll hopefully have more time to spend one-on-one with our president, and our community will have more access to our president as well.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Yant.
Yes, could Professor Dozier introduce some questions concerning faculty input? Could someone address her questions?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what the question is. What do you mean?
Professor Dozier, in her comments, raised some questions about faculty input into this position.
Into the appointment?
Yes. Could someone address their concerns, please?
Dr. Garcia? You could go ahead and address that. VP Zakovic, please.
The administrative policy allows us leeway in the appointment of interim, interim positions here at the district.
Dr. Zakovic, were you, if I may, were you hired in a similar fashion?
I was, I'm hired as an interim administrator, yes, and I was.
In a similar fashion?
In a similar fashion, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
Is that what Professor Dozier was questioning?
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay. Dr. Garcia, do you have any comments?
Well, for me, I just want to thank you for considering this. This person will work along the cabinet and myself, specifically ensure that we move the construction projects forward under other duties as assigned, as listed in the job description. I understand that that is a priority for the community, and I, that is the reason why I am requesting support.
Thank you. And if I might remind my colleagues, you know, we do receive these agendas well in advance. You have an opportunity. Yes, and if I may continue, trustee Stefan. It is an opportunity for us to ask questions and to ask for things like job descriptions and contracts well ahead of time. Thank you. We'll now move on to a roll call vote. President Garcia?
Student trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
None.
Trustee Stefan?
I want to be supportive of our new president. I realize that every new president needs support, so I will vote aye with reservations.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will now move on to item number 14, action administrative services, agreement for employment on interim executive vice president. Do I have a motion to approve 14.01 as presented? That's the one. Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. What a day it's been. Okay, we'll move on to item number 15. Approved return to campus proposals, 15.01. This is brought to the board today as an information item. Are there any questions from the board related to this information item? Okay. Fifteen, and that includes 15.02 administrative procedures. These are brought today as an information item. Are there any questions from the board related to these information items? And then there's 15.03, the 2020, 2021 College of the Desert Foundation Audit Report. This is brought to the board today as an information item. Are there any questions from the board related to this information item? Okay, we'll now move on, let's see, the study sessions, general obligation bonds. This was presented as part of 12.01. Okay, and then the next item, 16.02, the 50% law exemption, and that was also presented previously. So we'll move on to agenda item number 17, future agenda items. Student trustee Olson?
I have none at this time.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see today, you know, we looked at quarterly reports, and thank you, VP Ramon, for all your work on that. We also, you know, had a lot of conversation about the 50% law. And I remember that I requested the last board meeting a few years back of audit reports, and I still feel that it's important that we, that we look at those. I heard a lot of conversation today that our college looks similar to, you know, struggles that other colleges are having. But in my mind, my responsibility is to this college, which is College of the Desert. And I want to ensure that any decision that I make, you know, at any time, is always with the interest of what's best for our students and what's best for the college moving forward. So I really want to make sure that I have all of that background and all that information so that I'm able to gauge, you know, where we have been, where we are now, and where we're, you know, moving going forward. Although I did support, you know, approving the quarterly reports and filing for the exemption, I still think and feel that it's important for me as a trustee to have that information. So I just wanted to just remind the board that I really would like to see those reports. Thank you.
Trustee Yant?
None, thank you.
Okay, trustee Stefan?
Can you turn your mic on?
Do I have to repeat it all? Okay, there, do you want me to start again? Or do we have those? Okay, I'll start again. The first one is the minority male success. If we could have a report on what we're doing to ensure the success of our minority males succeeding at the college and how we're trying to help recruit them, that would be great because they are tending to be a forgotten group out there. The other one was addressing the needs of our parents, whether they're single parents and also dual parents in the family going back to college, so that we can increase our numbers in those areas as well. And then the COVID-19, this is a big issue, not just getting people vaccinated, but there are a number of people that cannot be vaccinated for medical reasons, and there are also individuals who have legitimate religious exemptions, and there are some other groups, I believe. But we need to be able to address the concerns so that everybody feels comfortable on the campus and so that those individuals don't feel that they're under attack because they do have legitimate reasons for not being vaccinated. And another one, this would be number four, I guess, would be the Zoom fatigue. And how many students are, don't want to do distance learning? Because maybe they are just totally zoomed out. You probably noticed I was changing glasses repeatedly here. I've had a lot of visual problems lately because I've been on the computer constantly, and it's driving me nuts. But that was another one. And then, of course, I am always going to say, I want to know what we're doing in the way of addressing the needs of our students, their basic needs, housing insecurity, food insecurity, transportation insecurity, childcare insecurity, financial insecurity, whatever insecurity they might have, and also their mental needs. Okay, so there's a lot of things there, I know. It doesn't all have to be done overnight, but these are our students, and they are very, very important to me, and I think everybody in the room.
Thank you, trustee Stefan. Trustee Perez?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just as I mentioned earlier, a report on what the status of us coming out of that malware attack is, maybe something from our classified staff IT department and from Vice President Ramon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And for me, I think we talked just a little earlier about it, that is the CARES Act funding. John, if we could take a look, we received a very large amount of CARES Act funding, and I'd like to know how the money was used.
Madam Chair, may I add one other thing?
Oh, I'm not done yet, but go ahead. That's okay, go ahead.
No, I'll wait for you.
Okay, all right. And then the last item is, in reviewing and hearing the monthly reports from our groups this month, I sense strong safety concerns as we work towards the winter and spring semesters. Or for next month, if we can provide a presentation on how we are and will continue to address the safety of those in our college community. For example, it might include comments, statement from our Riverside County Health with regards to. with regards to our plans for the next two semesters and provide the latest information on what other local community colleges are doing. For example, Talaverty, Riverside Community College, Copper Mountain, Mount San Jacinto, so that we and the community understand that we are not just acting unilaterally as trustees, but we are listening not only to our COVID-19 reporting team, but also to the county health officer and following similar protocols as recommended by county health and local community colleges and from the chancellor's office. So perhaps a report in December addressing some of the current concerns in today's reports, which included safety of non-instructional faculty, class sizes, expansion of course enrollments to caps to what is listed on the course outline of record, effectively eliminating social distancing in the classroom, adjunct concerns regarding a new AY42 Delta Plus variant detected in San Diego, and making COVID testing for unvaccinated students and employees a month, a must. So, Dr. Garcia, if we could perhaps address that. I know you have a lot of things on your plate perhaps for next month's meeting. So that does conclude my items. And trustee Gonzalez, you had one more item?
Again, my apologies. As trustee Stefan was requesting her items, I do want to thank you, those are great suggestions. And it kind of sparked a thought in my mind. I know there's, you know, a lot of questions with future projects and projects that, you know, that we already have lined up. And I think in addition to the data that trustee Stefan is requesting, I think it would be really beneficial to us as trustees and for the community as well if we're able to have a more detailed presentation on enrollment. Where do our students live? Where are they coming from so that we can also be mindful of growth in areas? And along the lines of the request from trustee Stefan, it would also help us, or I guess I should only speak for myself, better gauge what services would be most needed at the different campuses that we currently operate and future ones that, you know, that we will be discussing. So if I may just add, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? Trustee Stefan is holding up her finger. Okay.
I'd like to have an update periodically on how we're doing with FIGMAT. John's still here, so I'm sure he'll do that automatically or that'll become an automatic thing. But how we're doing with that and how we're meeting our 50% requirement on that.
Anything else? Going, going on. Okay. Closed session. The board will now recess to closed session. The live portion of this meeting will conclude. Should there be any reportable action, I will report it to the board secretary, which will get incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted before the end of business today. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I wish you all a very happy and safe Thanksgiving. And with that, board members and President Garcia, I ask that you please join closed